Forty-seven is now called to order. This is December 4th, 2017 at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
All right, everybody who is here and accounted for, and so is Linda, is here as well. Rob, where are you from?
Cleveland.
Cleveland. Okay, anyways, our first, well, my only Mayor's Award tonight, and I dressed up and wore my fancy tie just for you. Actually, it's for your wife, but anyways. Be it known, Rob, I'm glad to be giving you this, we're gonna miss ya, even though you're a transplant, haven't been here very long, it just fit right in with everybody, and you'd have made a good long-termer, but we're glad for the time that we had ya, and I mean that. So, be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model transplant Burlingtonian. We were hoping for LeBron and ended up with you. LeBron is cooler, better-looking, richer, and is a total star. You, on the other hand, are Rob Sussman, and you helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On December 4th, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Rob Sussman. Come on down, brother.
I know what you're thinking. They think, man, he really poured it out for me.
I'm thinking I need a third one of these, that's what I'm thinking I need.
All right.
Oh, okay.
Rob, have a word, please.
Oh, okay, absolutely.
Say something nice, Rob.
I'll try my best, for change. When I came here, I had no idea what to expect. I walked into this room, and I literally knew nothing about this place, I knew nothing about any of you. Some of you were sitting here in, actually, almost the same exact seats the first day I came in here, and this community has really embraced me in a way that no other community ever has. I've done radio in a lot of places, and this is the only place where I get stopped at supermarkets, and Annie Wilson sends me pictures of her daughter upset when she tells me that she's, that I'm leaving. That's something that I really hope I will be able to replicate sometime in the future, and if not, I'll always have the memory of Burlington, Iowa. Thank you all very much. And be nice to David Hightower. He's going to be, he's going to be doing this for the foreseeable future.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so thank you guys very much.
And you are?
Oh, I'm Rob Sussman.
Thank you. And you're always welcome back.
Keep it in mind.
Here, here.
Delaware doesn't work out, give us some time.
Just a message to Mrs. Sussman, you're welcome, you can leave, honey, but thank you for coming down. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds, and we have some resolutions. The first is a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for the 2016 HMA resurfacing project. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance of the 2016 former Dresser Rand Site cleanup project. The third is a resolution approving an application for funds from the Transportation Alternatives Program for the West Avenue Trail. And then the fourth is a resolution approving Energy Efficiency Plan Agreement Addendum between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Huckleberry Hotel at 3001 Wine Guard Drive, Suite 130 Burlington, Iowa, for the purchase of two Level 2 charging systems and one Level 3 station. And we also have appointments, Mayor Proton?
We have two appointments to the Low Run Housing Agency, Jeff Perkhardt and Kyrie Duckett, and we thank them for volunteering to help us out.
We most certainly do. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? I didn't see Leon.
Leon Chahin, 1821 Mount Boson Street. I'd like item number two in the resolutions.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda except Resolution Number 2.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plan and specifications for Flint River Trail Phase 1 South A.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve all items listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda except Resolution Number 2.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Well done. Okay, we have consideration of plans and specs for the Flint River Trail Phase 1 South A. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye Espris Scribe. Mr. Tisland?
With our previous project that we had undertaken for the trail, as shown in blue here along Bluff Road, we had secured grant funds over $800,000 for completion of that project. Part of that amount was based on the engineering estimate, some unknowns with the barrier wall there, and some of the fencing requirements, and how that was going to be constructed. Fortunately, the bids came in well under budget, and we do have some remaining funds, primarily through REIT grants that need to be expended. So we're looking to complete a, or send out for bid a smaller project, going from the end of the project that was completed this fall at Oak Street, up to the, just short of the driveway for Lamont Properties there on Bluff Street. This is approximately 670, 607 lineal feet along the east side of Bluff Road, completing again a 10-foot wide trail. This would have a metal barrier rail. The trail would go up to the curb, but have a metal barrier rail along the curb line to protect pedestrians or bike traffic from going into the street. The engineer's estimate is $231,000 for this portion of trail. We have approximately $255,000 of grant funds available, and do have budgeted funds for engineering as well. Bids are accepted until 2:00 PM on December 22nd here in the Thomas Smith Council Chambers, and the proposed trail improvements shall be fully completed on or before June 29th, 2018.
Eric, the resolution says December 21st. Has that changed anything?
That is, yeah, December 21st.
Okay.
Section in red, who's responsible for that, then?
That's the remaining portion that we still have to go out for grant funds to complete. Portion in yellow on Long Case is complete, so after this, hopefully this portion in green is completed in that summer, the, from, that red portion from Cash Street to nearly Eighth Street would be the only remaining portion of the trail to substantially complete. We do have funds programmed, I believe, in FY '20, FY '21 as match for grants, but it does take a few years to apply for those and secure funds.
I don't know why there, it's because of the railroad track being right there, that's...
It gets pretty narrow in through there, and looking at all options, whether going down Eighth Street or continuing on Bluff Road, there's a couple options there we're looking at.
Thank you.
How many years ago, off the top of your head, do you know, how many years ago did we start the trail program?
That was probably 2005, 2006, that we started portions on the levee and behind Case, so it's been a long-term project. County continues to work on theirs, I think they're working on some project through Stars Cave, but ultimately, this trail would connect from the port of Burlington downtown up to, up to Big Hollow, being approximately 20 miles of trail.
It's been a process, it's been being whittled at, I would say, so we're getting there, but it's not anything that we just did in two years, so just want to get that out. Questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second twice. You guys are on it tonight. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Yes, aye.
Davidson?
Yeah.
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for Flint River Trail Phase 1 South A.
I got a second, thank you. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Fleming?
All right, the yeses have it. Okay, this is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property on the West Avenue Mason Road urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Publications may be in the Hawkeye as well on this one. Mr. Tisland?
This is the, again, the second step in the process for this project here on West Avenue, the Park West subdivision proposed by Mr. Dane Cahill. He has gone through the preliminary plat process and been approved for that. Also, the urban renewal plan was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. This second step, I guess, in the process for TIF funds is setting up TIF district specific to the lot, Outlet 3 of Swisher subdivision with his planned subdivision there. That's the area that he has preliminary platted for 14 lots, and this ordinance allows for TIF funds to be, this set up as a TIF district and TIF funds to be utilized for a project in this area. Again, the urban renewal plan specified up to maximum of $350,000 could be utilized of TIF fund payments back to the owner, that is a not-to-exceed amount, and then the LMI set aside based on that amount as well. The original urban renewal area talked about the, all the properties between West Avenue and Mason Road where future road connections could occur, particularly tying Dill Street-Gilbert Road from West Avenue down to Mason Road, either through Cambridge or otherwise, but connecting up these roadways. This TIF district and ordinance is specific only to this project. Any future projects would have to go through the same step of amending the urban renewal plan and then setting up a TIF district for those individually.
If this is the second step, when is the third step taken?
After approval of this, we'd have to set a hearing for a development agreement, and then that development agreement would lay out the terms for the use of TIF, number of years and amounts and percentage.
So that's likely not to happen until January?
Not likely to happen until, if this gets approved by council, which takes at least two readings, three normally unless you waive the third, so probably January.
Okay, thank you.
Another point that was requested to be clarified is on how TIF, the development agreement will specify the terms of the TIF agreement, but that'll be in the form of a TIF rebate. We will not, we will not be putting money out at risk. We will essentially be committing future taxes that are paid to the developer up to that $350,000. The agreement would be for 10 years, and there would have to be valuation, new valuation created to levy taxes on. The first $350,000, well, not the first $350,000, because at the same time, we'd be setting another 40, 40% of that amount aside for the LMI, would be rebated back to the developer, but it would be rebated from taxes, future taxes paid that would not otherwise be created or be there.
So if the development does not happen in 10 years...
We're not at risk.
We're not at risk.
The developer carries all the risk for the capital expenditure.
So the only taxes paid back to the developer are what's generated out of this district?
Specifically out of this area.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from the audience? Mr. Chahin?
Leon Chahin, 1821 Mount Boson Street. TIF is one of my pet peeves. I guess I'd like to ask any of you, is there a study that says this actually increases your tax base, actually increases tax revenue? Is there a study that any of you have read? Yes, sir?
There's a study that says on both sides, that, I won't lie to you and say that I read it all, but yeah, I skimmed through it, yeah, there's a study that says that it's a good thing. There's, there's a study on the opposite side of that, that...
Well, that's what I'm alluding to, Swenson at Iowa State University.
And I've probably read the same thing.
And they update that study every year.
You can get either side, any, either side of the argument.
So what I'm saying, looking at what Swenson and others have done at Iowa State University, there's a pending tax on our utility bills to make up the difference. It hasn't happened yet, you tried once before, and it's still lurking. The reason you're considering that, and have considered that in the past, is what TIF does to your budget. You are hurting the people that have paid their taxes, as they should, for 30 years, for people that just come blowing into this community. And you don't understand the concept of depreciation.
Oh, wait.
Every, let me continue. Every extra dollar of taxes I pay that aren't really my responsibility is a dollar of money that I don't spend maintaining my house. You're burning the candle at both ends by doing this. It needs to stop.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or concerns? Hold on one second, please. Any other questions or concerns from the audience?
Marlon McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. I agree with Leon, I mean, if you're, you're giving the tax rebate to him, so that when the people come in and do this to buy the houses, then they're not going to get the tax abatement, is that correct?
That is.
Why is he the only one that's ever gotten the TIF? There's been other developments that have been done, but nobody else has ever asked for the TIF. Dan Cahill's the only one that asked for it back, when, in 99, 2000, whatever? He's the only one that ever got it, so why are we doing it for him? As somebody up here said last time, if we do it for him, then everybody else is going to be wanting it from now on, and you aren't going to be able to say no, because just you gave it to him, then you have to give it to everybody. We haven't done it in the past, we shouldn't do it again. I mean, we did it once for him, but we shouldn't do it again. We also did the manor, which we shouldn't have done. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Marlon.
Thank you, Juan.
Any other comments from the audience? We've got the developer here, do we have questions for the developer? Can you come on up? You guys good?
I think I got a grasp on what he wants to do.
Okay, you guys good?
I'm good.
Yeah.
You're good?
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the West Avenue Mason Road urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa.
Second, and I think it's important to note, it is the first reading. We still have two more to go.
That's true, that's true. Kathleen, let's vote it.
McCambell?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street Right-Away located between Valley and Market Streets of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Tisland?
This again is vacating the portion of College Street located between Valley and Market Street, that is, lies adjacent to the former Apollo School Site, that's a city previously sold. The property on either side of the site is owned by the same owner, Midwest Cornerstone Development. As part of the sale agreement, it stated that the city would work to vacate this portion of Right-Away. Has gone through the Planning Commission, they recommended approval 5 to 0, and this would combine all properties together to form one large lot. There is no usable utilities or other use for the property.
Are there any questions or concerns on this project from the audience?
In that case, Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street Right-Away located between Valley and Market Streets, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street Right-Away located between Valley and Market Streets of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second, thank you both, sirs. Let's vote on the amendment?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Well done. Number two.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cab Vehicles for Hire of Burlington, Iowa. Code ordinance is deleting Chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire in its entirety.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on that.
Wait, 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 wait.
What did we do? Oh, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
Any comments on it?
No comments. In that case, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of Burlington, Iowa. Code ordinance deleting Chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire in its entirety, read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington, Iowa City Code ordinances, and deleting Chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire drivers in its entirety.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Well done. Resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of the Arbor View Estates subdivision.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
This again is subdivision located north off of Sunnyside, just to the east of Cliff Road. They are, did get, go through the process and have been approved for the preliminary plat. As I stated last week at the work session, we're still waiting for some infrastructure to see if everything's gone through the review and approval process. There are a few items still remaining to be corrected. They did a sewer inspection video last week, and there's a couple items that need, still need to be corrected, so we'd not recommend approval at this time until those are corrected, and then bring it back forward for consideration of approval after that. So at this time, still some outstanding sewer items that need be corrected, some of the intakes and piping, and we'd want those corrected, and have a resolution accepting infrastructure at the same time as this, so staff would not recommend approval at this time.
Okay. All right, just so they don't get hellaed at, even though we shut this down. Does everybody from the audience have any concerns? I see none. Counsel?
I did drive on that new street today, it's really nice. It's gonna be a nice day.
That's nice, it is.
Ruined, I say.
That's a nice addition.
Yeah, and they're starting to build it.
Good deal.
So it's, it's gotta be nice.
It is.
You guys were good?
Yes.
Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambell?
Aye.
While you're one of those...
Oh!
Go on, we're gonna go on to the next person. Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
It's my day today, you know.
No. Fleming?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great, you guys outvoted me. Wonderful, all right. Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution for approving the finished design for the flood wall.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor?
In front of you is a pretty simple resolution discussing the approval of finished design of the flood wall. As you can see here, option number two is my recommendation for the finish of the flood wall, based on review with the consulting engineering and architect firm. We feel like this is probably the best way to move forward. I can show you the other two if you'd like. This is option number one, kind of has some cutout holes there. There was not a whole lot of strong feeling from staff on that one, and then if you'd show them the third one. This is fairly similar to the look that we have right now, it's just much wider ridges, and does not have the durability issues that I have with the, with the current section. Our consulting engineering firm is here to answer some questions. Just briefly, before the meeting, we talked about what kind of change order and cost we would see. It isn't defined as of right now, but I think we will likely not see anything for much of a change order, so you can confirm that if you'd like, but this would be my recommendation. It's fairly simple, it's got some reveals to keep some aesthetic look to it, and then they'll do some sandblasting as well on it, but I feel more comfortable moving forward with this option than, than the current design that we have.
What costs has occurred in this?
Should be a wash, should be relatively, they're gonna be able to move at a much quicker pace with something like that. There's some costs that they will incur for sandblasting, but because of that and the forms that they likely will have on hand, so...
So timeline-wise, we're gonna be pretty close to where we're at, or...
Um, I don't know, I think we shouldn't be set back any. I know that there's gonna be some coordinating that they're gonna have to do to get moving, but, and to do option number three, which is the similar type of form, we would be looking at probably a four to six-week delay.
You guys good? Any concerns or questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Simple is better.
Yes.
I'm praying for no flood.
Amen to that, brother. We appreciate that, Bishop. All you can do for us, Kathleen, let's go.
Are we clear then, are we accepting his recommendation? Is that correct?
Yes, option two.
Option...
Yeah.
I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure we're doing this right.
Yes.
I should have clarified that. I took the liberties of inserting my recommendation as the option approved. It's listed Exhibit A, or Option Number 2, in the resolution. I did that for simplicity's sake, and then if you would like to have changed it, you could simply amend that resolution, so...
I have...
Approving the resolution as is will approve my recommendation.
That's, I wanna make sure we're clear doing that. Thank you.
We good?
Yes.
Okay, Kathleen?
McCambell?
Let's vote on this one. Absolutely.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
All right.
Your Honor, I move approve the final acceptance of the 2016 former dresser Randsey cleanup project.
Okay, second.
Second.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Once again, Leon Chehan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Boson Street. I guess it's more of a question and I, I guess procedure. On things like this, I know you're talking big dollars, but I don't see any dollar signs in this resolution. So my question is, how much are we talking about?
The resolution speaks of, final cost was six hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and fifty-six cents for the cleanup. It, it is written in the resolution, but that's, that, that's the amount of it.
It's not showing here.
It's not in the title, and, and there isn't a release of retention monies on this.
We have a, a bond in that amount to hold for thirty days.
Once again, on, on that, not much you can do at this stage, but this is, this is the cost of economic development.
It's already done.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, this is, again, my pet peeve, economic development. I'm paying for that. That hurts.
Any other comments or concerns? Counsel?
None.
Good.
Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambe?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay. Now this is time where we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there anybody from the audience that has any comments tonight? Yes, sir?
Eric Renteria, nine oh seven High Street. I know I'm gonna start to sound like a broken record here before too long in regard to parking downtown, and, you know, there certainly seems to be some momentum for leaving the status quo. So, one of the comments that I had received back from several of you is that we'd need to hear from more people, that this is a significant issue that, that needs to be addressed. And so I took a couple days of my time, which I consider to be very valuable, and I don't have a lot of extra time these days. But I visited virtually every business on Jefferson Street and a few that were on the side streets, and I had them sign a petition asking the city council to adopt the changes that, that I recommended in my previous letter to you. I didn't have anyone who wouldn't sign it. Every single person down there recognizes that the, the solution that was put forward didn't address the issues that were brought up in any of the parking commission meetings or the study that was done. And if you read the study and you, and you look at the information, there's just challenges to everything that, that's in there. And at times, it seems as though the study was done absent of, of reality. That what was really going on downtown, if, if you take a snapshot and you call that reality, then you're not taking into account the fact that the downtown is a living, breathing organ and that, and that the, the dynamics are, are in flex. And that we need a program that addresses the three goals that were set out at the start of, of this whole parking process. And what I talked to the people downtown about was the psychological elements of downtown. First being that, that we have a perception problem. There's a perception that there's no parking downtown. In the commission meetings, when we went down to the library and they pulled out all the charts and put everything around the walls, we all sat down in a room and said, you know, well, what should we do? My recommendation was we should make all the parking free, because guess what? There is plenty of parking downtown. The problem is that we blocked everybody out of all the parking downtown. And, and so we have all these leased spots, and then in each, in each parking lot, there's three or four spots where people can park. But as I've said before, if you don't have a master's degree in parking downtown Burlington, you'll never figure out whether or not you can use those spots. And now we've made it worse because all those spots you can't park in, sometimes you can. But again, people aren't gonna figure that out. So, the idea that I talked to about people downtown was to make it simple. Let's address the issue of the perception that there's no parking downtown. By making it so that if there's a spot open downtown, you can park in it. And the rules that apply to the parking lots are the same as what we apply to the streets. We have a, an hour limit or a two hour, three hour limit, three hours was my recommendation, on the flat lots, and if the spot is open, you can park in it. You don't have to worry about whether or not you have to pay the little yellow box or not. It doesn't matter. And I talked to people about the little yellow boxes. They said, yeah, most days I get fifty cents out of those. We're spending more for the guy to go around and pick it up than we're getting out of the yellow boxes for people to park there. Because guess what? No one's parking there, because they don't know if they can or not. The second element, psychological element of parking downtown that I tried to address in my paper that I sent to all of you, was this concept that we, we have to park next to the place where we're shopping. If you create parking, a, a shopping district downtown, which I proposed the Snake Alley District, if you, if you take, if you take Westland Mall and you drop it on Jefferson Street, it goes from Main Street almost out to Central. So by creating the Snake Alley District, what we've done is we've put people in their shopping location, no matter where they're at downtown. So if you drive downtown and park and you're in the Snake Alley District, you are there, because you will walk from Yonkers to the Christian bookstore. So, when you're downtown, if you park behind the Burns and Sons and you have to walk to the coffee shop, it's less of a walk than it is when you're in the mall.
I love that part of your idea. I don't know about the rest of it, but I love the Snake Alley District, dude, I, I do.
So the, so the two things, those are really the two issues. One, we have to, we, we have to create the perception that parking is easy downtown, and there is adequate parking. And two is that we have to adopt an urban lifestyle that allows people to feel comfortable walking one or two or maybe even three blocks. But nobody will ever walk more than three blocks to shop downtown, and it's just not that far. So, the, so that's what's in my, my plan. That's what I spent, I, I will tell you, I spent a full sixteen hours talking to people about this plan up and down Jefferson Street, and every single person said, you're right, we need to do something about it. I like what you have here. It makes an allowance for the three groups of constituents that we're trying to help. The people who live downtown, the people who work downtown, and the people who shop downtown. That's what this addresses. And it does, it adds on, that it's, it's cost neutral, okay? And I even added on, if, if you remember in my proposal, a fifty dollar parking tag for people who live downtown, kind of a get out of jail free card, that, that converts people from being violators of parking law to, hey, I've got this and, and I'm working with the city, and it puts us on good terms, and it, and it avoids that, that animosity between downtown parking and people who live downtown. So there's, I, I've heard, I've heard, well, I like parts of your plan. I've heard, I, I, I'd need to speak to more people. I would like to know, if there's some part of this plan you don't like, I'd like to know what it is. And here's the more people. It's about sixty people. I don't know how many you need. This is how important it is to me.
You can leave that.
Do I give this to somebody?
Yeah, you can leave that with the city clerk right there. That's our copy, right? We could.
It is the only copy I have, but I.
We'll make copies of it, and I'll make sure you get that back.
It's insane.
I, I assume so.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Um, yeah, so, so I don't know what it takes to get this on city council agenda. I'm asking you, again, to, to embrace this. What we have, it does not work, and, and so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm asking for your specifics on what you don't like. It doesn't have to be my exact plan. I, I, I'm not a throw the sticks in the mud kinda guy, and that's how they are. But what we have to do is something different than what we're doing, and I think this is a, a good way to go. All right?
Thank you.
I would think we should be able to come back and respond.
I would like to propose that we have it put on a work session, I believe January eighth is a work session, if I'm not mistaken. Cause this.
I don't have a calendar. Is it a Monday?
Yeah, it's a Monday.
Yes, it should be.
Okay. Just because of the, the changeover of who's sitting, it only makes sense to me to do it that way. I don't know if anyone else would like to see that, who's here now. But I would.
I hear what you're saying.
Yay, nay.
No, I, I hear what you're saying. I think I'd just rather wait till they're actually on and then, and then, and then present it.
Well, that's, I just wanna get that work session there.
Yeah, this is gonna be their, one of their first few work sessions. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, Eric, I appreciate your passion on that. Parking's always been an issue. You know, we were, I was a merchant downtown for years. We, we fought parking all the time. And I would, I, I wouldn't mind discussing it further. I do have a concern about leased spots, because that's why you lease a spot, is so you're guaranteed a spot to stay at. So, I, I think it's something we could look at, but I, speaking as a new council member and feeling I was pretty well brushed up on things, and I went through the city's parking plan, I'd like to let the new council members get a little breathing before we put it on the, the work, the work session. That does, so maybe not the very first one, but soon, we could just kick it around.
I guess reasonable. As an old councilman, we should address this thing. We should give a response specifically at what we like and don't like about what's being proposed. Parking's a critical issue downtown. It's a perception maybe, but it is an issue.
So would you like, maybe our next work session? Would you like that?
I don't know. No, I'm not trying to rush this, I'm just saying.
No, I'm, I'm saying just from, for, cause you, you know, as a, being able to respond kind of thing. Cause it is.
No, not necessarily.
Okay. I just didn't, I wasn't quite sure where you were going with that.
No, no.
No, I think you're, you're right. It should be the new council's decision.
Right.
And I agree with John, but you also have to.
All I'm saying is, we should respond, I mean.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it.
Well, hold on, let me, let me stop for a minute.
And I would love to, and I can't wait.
Hold on.
But you remember, you're.
This isn't on the, this isn't on the agenda, so.
No, you're not.
Right now, we're discussing on if, when we can discuss it.
I just wanna make, I just wanna make that clear. This isn't on the agenda, so as far as responding, getting in depth and giving answers, that's something we don't want to, but we don't wanna tread on.
But you gotta remember, you're also gonna be in the middle of your budget cycle, and you got a lot of stuff to do there too, so just keep that in mind.
Well, it's, it is never ending as well.
I might come down in January as a citizen, and I'll be at that microphone, so.
There you go, there you go.
We'd welcome it.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Eric Caman, shut it down. All right. Mr. Tisland? Mr. No Shave November? All right. Kathleen, you got anything? Okay. Counselor?
Of course.
I know you do.
Okay, so tons of stuff happening downtown. Um, let's see, and also at the Players Workshop, which, get your tickets early, cause they always seem to sell out now. The Savannah Sipping Society, I believe opening night is Friday, seven thirty. And tickets are only twelve dollars, but you gotta get them early, because I know I didn't get to see the Addams Family last time, but they sold out every night. Saturday is Miracle on Jefferson Street again. You can sign up at the Art Center with your family. It's only ten dollars, and you get to go to all kinds of different shops around downtown and get to do fun activities. And I know I took my daughter and we had a blast.
Sweet.
And then, everyone loves an ugly sweater party.
No, not everyone, but go ahead.
Okay, so, okay, everyone loves Christmas Vacation, the movie? Hmm? Okay.
No.
Well, let's put it both together, and then go to the Capitol Theater.
No.
For the Christmas Vacation Ugly Sweater Party, starting at seven PM. That's only six dollars, so, and it's always a fun time, and they have little events down there.
I don't even have an ugly sweater.
That's time, my, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Counselor?
Actually, I just wanted to say that Matt Rinker and Linda Murray and I went on the city tour last Thursday. It was quite impressive to see the city staff that we have. We are blessed Burlington to, to have all those talented people. Man, if, they, they are informed, they are proactive, they are working hard, so. And then our city facilities, you can definitely see from the previous time I, I've gone on one of those tours, there's some definite upgrades. And with the new PD coming, you know, Chief Beard showed us the, gave us the old PD tour, and I was done after a first half hour. That's shameful that we had you in that building, sir.
Shameful.
But I realized we had to do what we had to do. But anyway, I was just really impressed, and I think I can speak for the other two incoming council members. It was a good exercise, good discussion, and a real eye, eye opener on some things. So thank you for all the city staff that took the time.
And did I hear your favorite part was?
Yeah, well, the favorite part was this, you know, the, the, the tour of the sewage plant. Matt had a little observation that kinda put us on a titter, and I'm not gonna say it here, but you can, you can ask me about it, so. It was good. We had a good time. It was fun.
Everybody loves hanging out with Don. It's a party, baby.
Hey, it was, it was, that was the marathon session. He was moving. So, that's all I have.
I just want to, I want to say happy birthday to my daughter. She's twenty-one today, and so, yeah, I just wanna say that, because I know a lot of people have wondered, how does this guy stay so young looking? I'm only twenty-six. So anyways.
That's really a question I had.
I appreciate that. I want to thank Scott Teeter for inviting me to the Carol of Lessons this year. It was phenomenal. It was awesome. I, I missed last year, but I was there the year before, the year before that. They never, they never disappoint. So that was phenomenal as usual. If you haven't gone to that, you, you really, you're really missing out on a, a really good time, something that, that you could store into the old piggy bank brain for quite a while and enjoy. But anyways, that was phenomenal. And also, my, my thing is, I wanna bring this up. Oh, well, it goes in line with it. There's a kid that's playing the drums off of Roosevelt. You know what I'm talking about? Yeah, I talked to this kid. He's like, man, I, I just wanna, I just wanna entertain people and stuff. He's, I'm not trying to bother anybody. He said, the cops pulled me over, said I can't do it. What he did, wanted to make sure that I said it. He said, Mayor, I wanna make sure that you know though, he said, they weren't rude to me or anything like that. He said, they were just telling me that I can't. I said, well, that's good. I said, because you can't. You know, you're the medium. Said, you can't. I said, but there ought to be a place in Burlington where you can. I said, I don't know where that place is. I don't know where you could go and just play those buckets for people that wanna walk by. You know, he wasn't harassing anybody. He's a good kid. I said, maybe, I said, there's a lot of things that you could be doing. I said, instead you're out here trying to, trying to liven up, you know, Burlington. I said, but I, I said, I don't know where that place is. I said, but I'm gonna find out. So I'm just throwing this out there, Jim, because I'm gonna be talking to you about it tomorrow. But we've gotta find, we've gotta have a place where an artist, where a drummer plays buckets, or somebody plays a guitar, can go and play that guitar on the streets and not bother anybody, and if people wanna join in and get some action, they can, because I know I would be interested in that. So, to the kid with the buckets, he said, I'm gonna be watching on Monday. I don't know if you're watching, kid with the buckets.
Nancy Navy Park.
We're gonna find a place, we're gonna find a place for you to play here in Burlington, because he's not bothering anybody, not causing any problems. Just wanna play his buckets. And if there's anybody else out there like him that, that has buckets or a guitar, something like that, yeah, we, we need to find a place for you to, to be able to express yourself, so.
And actually, I, I got to hear him play after the parade, which was nice. You know, he wasn't being disrespectful and like interrupting the parade. Right after the parade ended, we got to hear him play, and everyone just stopped, and we watched and listened, and yeah, so.
Yeah, but the medium's not a good deal, because I was trying to listen to him and watch, and it's dangerous out there. And we don't want him getting hurt, that's first of all.
Or anybody else getting hurt, so.
Yeah, so he can't be out there.
Yeah, we let him know. But anyways, you tell the boys that, that stopped him and let him know. He said that they were very delicate with him and was just letting him know that, hey, there could be some problems. So we appreciate that also from our gentlemen in the blues. So, just throwing that out there. Okay, Mayor Proton?
Just so you can plan ahead, I think one of the neatest things that downtown does is that living windows. That's not this Thursday, it's the following Thursday, correct?
Sixteenth.
Yep, from sixteenth. That is a tremendous time. People should plan ahead to make sure they get down there.
It does.
I agree. That makes sense. That's all I ever said this time.
That's all Bishop's got, but you reserve the right. You always do, and you always will.
Nick?
Let me get, okay. And I'll get the chief after that.
Agency Street, I think, is gonna be closing down here for the winter. So you see some of the cones being picked up.
Construction work?
Construct, sorry. I'm thinking of it as the project. We're just shutting the road down. The construction will be finalized for the winter. I forget how I abridge stuff sometimes. And the depot probably would work for Drummer Man to play his buckets inside. It's climate controlled at least, a little safer. I also wanted to clarify some of the parking conversation that has had tonight. We have about fourteen thousand dollars worth of signs and have about four, five thousand dollars worth of posts being prepared for us. Back in June, the parking committee made a presentation, and then following those recommendations and then those policies that you approved, we ordered that, those signs. And so, I guess I'm a little lost on whether or not we should install those, because those, those signs will be installed based on the things that we brought forward to you. So, if, if there's some changes that are coming, I would, I would like to not have staff install those signs coming up here in the next several weeks. So, I just, any sort of clarification. But we've already spent fifteen thousand dollars. Correct. On waste off of this.
We gotta give it a chance. We don't have the signs up yet, so until you, until you, you have them installed, I don't know, you're gonna, you don't know if it's gonna work or not until you install them, so.
Okay. Well, I will proceed with having staff install said signs.
Do you know when you'll be getting everything in?
I don't know when the posts will be done. They had to go to the painter.
Yeah, I'm just curious. That's all I wanted.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank goodness Roosevelt. Her agency isn't gonna be closed.
That's gonna be a problem. No, I just wanted to remind everybody Shop With A Cop Saturday. We talked about it last week, but this, this a reminder. I mean, it's a great event, and, you know, if you don't think people in this community don't band together and care, you need to kinda be part of one of these events, because the donations and the money and the, the thought and the caring that goes into this is just phenomenal. And so, it really makes you proud to be part of Burlington and the community. And a special thanks to Councilman Rinker. I mean, he's really responsible for this program and the beginning of the program, so. And he was into that way before he started his political career, so thanks to him, and we appreciate his efforts. But we got a great bunch of young kids, and I'm sure it's gonna be an exciting day. So, we're still trying to get all the permission slips. That's something that goes on every year, but we're getting there, so. I just wanted to remind everybody, that's what'll be going on Saturday afternoon. Probably around eleven or twelve is when we go to Walmart, and sometimes that creates concern with all the emergency vehicles, but it's all about the kids, so.
Do you start at Blackhawk again?
Yes. Yep. Yep, we'll leave Blackhawk and go to Walmart most of Burlington.
When did you guys start that? It's the fourth year, third or fourth year?
Two thousand and fourteen was the first year.
Yeah.
Somebody had mentioned that was it two years ago, there's like, well, Burlington Cops, they do something, at least in the Quad Cities, they ran a deal in the Quad Cities, they were doing the Shop With a Cop, I said, we do shop with the cop, I just didn't know what you started, and what you've been doing, so.
So I just wanted to remind everybody, and, yeah, as far as the drummer, he's a really respectful young man, he understood, and it's kinda disappointing, I know that, but, but he was very respectful, too, so, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda, you can close in remarks, we'll give you, we'll give you a shot, the public did.
I'm just really excited to find out that we were awarded what's called the Wilson Collection, those of you that are into country schools, it's a full collection of 20 desks, we've got framed prints of the presidents, all kinds of goodies, lunchbox, old school bells, and we're gonna be meeting tomorrow night at the library, those of you that are interested in that, we're gonna go out to Ohio, pick up this collection, fix up Zion School, and make it an interpretive center, so I'm really psyched about that, yeah.
Good job, good job, Mr. Rinker, counselor?
I just wanna echo John's comments with regard to the infrastructure and the facilities we have in our community, and the people, men and women that are working for us, that tour was amazing, we look around our community, we see all these different projects going on, and the facilities we have, and they're really top notch, so, big thanks to Jim for making that work, and, and like I said, I just wanted to echo those comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to go?
I, I guess I'm on the air with you on Wednesday?
Supposed so, yes.
One thing that, just to make sure that you know moving forward, something that we've been working on is rate study with Feenster and Kim, I know that we have a meeting on that Wednesday this week, just to get a little bit of an update of where things are, I think we're on the stormwater side primarily right now, sanitary.
They're both together.
We, we were, we're looking at a comprehensive rate structure review on both the sanitary and stormwater side, I don't know if we're looking at a rate, a new rate structure being put in place for this next July one, or if it's the one after, but that's one of the things we'll be talking about, and we wanna make sure that we get that information to the chamber as well, so that the business committee has an idea that some of the changes that are coming down, we've gotten at least some of the preliminary information on the stormwater side to them, in regards to overall changes that potentially be impacting the commercial industrial accounts, but that's something just to have on your radar, that we are looking to go forward with, one of the things that we talked with, with Feenster and Kim going into that, you know, we've been trying to go on about a 3% annual rate increase, which no one likes to see, but we're trying to stay in compliance as much as we can with the CSO orders, we wanted to make sure that for residential side, as we did rate structure analysis, that we kept the residential side kinda whole on that 3% rate increase, and then adjusted other categories as necessary to come into balance, so that there is appropriate cost going to the different categories of clients or customers for our systems, so there are some system, or some of our customers who are very potentially gonna see some significant changes to their bills, but our, our core group that we're trying to maintain on that, the same structure as our base residential rates, and maintain our overall integrity of the system, so, just know that that's one of the big things that's coming forward, the water system did this just a couple years ago, which we're able to piggyback off of, and I think they're just, they just got their rates in place this last year, or this next year?
I think it's next year.
This next year, so we're all gonna be having some changes in our rate structures, all the utilities moving forward, so, that was what I had for tonight.
I forgot one, sorry.
Just.
Go ahead.
I'll just say that, as you talk about sweaters, anything that I pick out personally doesn't look good, so.
Isn't that the truth, also, just wanna say, just real quick, we're gonna dismiss, but we did have this last week, I wanna thank everybody that came to the mayor's tea, it was a phenomenal success, and for those citizens that are wondering, saying, hey, why would the city waste money on the mayor's tea, they didn't, I had to pay for everything myself, we drank tea out of Dixie cups, so I just want that documented for the record again. Are we ready to go, guys?
Yes.
All right.
Your Honor, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's second, it's time to get out of here, before we start drinking that Dixie cup, Kathleen?
McCampbell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you, Jim.